Good evening, y'all. Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to call this city council meeting of August the 6th to order, and I'd like to call on Ward 6 for the invocation.
All right. I had a guest lined up to be here. I guess he got caught up in the Hopkinsville traffic, so Mr. Don Marsh is the best backup money can buy, so I'm gonna ask him to say the invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Father, thank you for the promises of your word that you've given to us as leaders and citizens in the city of Hopkinsville, and that is that you've promised that we could have wisdom, that you wouldn't question us on that, you'd give us all that we'd ask. We ask God for wisdom tonight. We ask for discernment tonight, God, courage, compassion, that we can, God, make decisions based on the needs of folks in our community. We ask you to touch each of them. God, we speak for first responders, all of our military, people around the world. We ask God that wherever they're stationed, that you'd protect them. God, as we pray tonight, we ask God for peace, as we ask for the city of Hopkinsville, and that you would prosper folks and give them the blessings that you promised. So we give you thanks for all that tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
He's here. Can he do another one?
If he wanted to, go right here.
He just walked in.
Buddy Slaughter stepped to the mic.
This will be the first time we've ever had two prayers.
Hey, we're gonna have two, it's okay.
We need all we get. That's right.
We can't ever get too much prayer.
Yeah.
Let's just...
Father, we are grateful for the state and for our community. Pray for our mayor, for our council. Pray for what tonight that it say you would convene, that you would give them wisdom and direction to make our city a more beautiful place to live. We ask...
For each council member that you would bless them and their families. Pray that they don't have any needs that are going unmet. Thank you, Father God, for the sacrifices for our community. We ask that you would give them courage and wisdom as they make decisions to move our city forward. We pray, God, that you would sovereignly guide each heart and guide each decision, so that the decisions made will be best for the citizens of our community here in Hopkinsville. And again, Father, we thank you. We thank you for your grace and for your mercy, in Christ's name. Amen.
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 Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Call the clerk to call on the roll.
Councilmember Francis?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Here.
Councilmember Craig?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Here.
Councilmember Meek?
Here.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Here.
Councilmember Keel?
Here.
Councilmember Bill?
Here.
Councilmember Handy?
Present.
And we do have a quorum.
All righty. Item 5, awards and recognitions. I call on Chief Newby to come to the podium.
Mayor, council, we have two promotions tonight, and we have a distinguished group award we're gonna hand out. So to start off, I want to call up Captain Martin Lopez.
How you doing, sir?
Great, sir.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I'm Martine Lopez.
As citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that will faithfully perform to the best of your abilities the duties of police captain for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and that will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you for that. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Thanks for your service.
Congratulations.
Sergeant Jared Beasley?
How you doing, Mr. Beasley?
Good, sir.
Good, sir.
I'll get you to raise your right hand, please. All right, put these glasses down. I state your name.
I, Jared Beasley.
A citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of my abilities and duties, police sergeant for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and that will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So help me God. All righty. Thank you, sir. Don't stab him too many times.
Congratulations.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you so much. Well done. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
All righty. Item 6, we will, just a minute, we will. Public comment. All righty, item 6, we will open the floor up to public comments. If anyone from the public would like to come up and speak at the podium, please do it this time. Please state your name and address.
My name is Diane Cronny Turner, and my address is 26 Harton Place. I am coming. You have a flyer in front of you that the Second Annual Humminbird Festival at Jeffers Bennett Environmental Center. You're one of our sponsors, and we want to see some of you out to come out and be with us during our Humminbird Festival. We have all kind of activities scheduled, so you see our sponsors, so please come out and support us if you can. It's on a Sunday afternoon. I'm here for a second reason also. I attended the Citizens Police Academy for the six weeks course, and I want to thank Chief Newby and his staff for a job well done. It was eye-opening. I knew some, but I enjoyed all the rest of it. And the police department, it should be commended for the job that they do because their job is not easy with everything that they have to do. So we need to thank our police officers when we see them and tell them for a job well done because their job is not easy. So if anyone ever, if they do the police academy again, try to go through it so you can learn what they have to do on the other side. We're always ready to criticize, but we're never ready to thank them. So I want to give them thanks for all that they do for Hopkinsville Christian County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Are any other public speakers who'd like to come up and speak tonight at the podium? All righty. All right, we'll move into item 7, mayor's comments. We had a good weekend. We had a real busy weekend. We had the launch at the HK Young Bourbon Launch Party on Friday night. We had Men to Be Gala on Saturday night. We had a great time there and a good fundraiser. Had a lot going on. We also had the Emancipation Proclamation at the museum and HRC with Alyssa Keller and Ms. Rachel with HRC. Thank y'all so much for everything y'all did. We had a great time there. On Saturday, some of the council members were all at the Edmund Street House for the ribbon cutting there with the Lincoln Group, and Ms. Holly was there with us too from CDS. Ms. Smiley was there from the Housing Authority. We had a lot of fun there, and a young couple was really happy to move in. They should be moving in this week there with the Lincoln Group. They've done got people moving into the house, so we're looking forward to many more projects like that going on in the inner city with the folks here, and the land bank helped do that, and we appreciate all they done on that. We got Relay for Life at the Sportsplex on 816. We got pickleball at the Sportsplex on 86. Excuse me, I gotta hit myself here. And we have the girls' middle school softball tournament, the 16th and 17th of August. And I don't want everybody to forget, we have Summer Salute on the 23rd and 24th downtown, and we're gonna have a lot of fun there with Palmer Lee, the Jimmy Church Band, and a bunch of fun and entertainment to go around to everybody. All righty. All right, we'll move into item 8, reports from officers, committees, and guest speakers. That'd be Ms. Melissa Clayton with the TIF report. Good evening.
All right, so it's that time of year where we have the annual TIF report. So we have three TIFs currently that we are collecting on and rebating back. So we'll start with the How McCoy TIF. The How McCoy TIF, I'm just gonna do the totals. Total collections was $15,338. Rebated back to the developer was $11,475, and retained by the city was $3,0863. On the Drew McCoy TIF, that's just a property tax rebate, and it's 100% rebate. We collected $17,123, and we rebated $17,123. On the Convention Center TIF, total collected on it was $32,952. Rebated back to the developer is $22,653. Retained by the city is $10,299. So our fund balance for TIF July 1st was $64,671. Total collections, $65,413 from the three TIFs. We're also getting interest on the account. The total interest for the year was $4,214, so total rebated back to developers was $51,250, and that leaves our fund balance at June 30th was $83,048. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about the TIFs or the TIF rebates.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
While we're on this right here on the reports, I would like to call on Chief Newby to come to the front and speak to us just for a minute. It's not on your agenda, but...
Good evening again. So we've had a few questions. We've been doing some, a lot of traffic enforcement, governor highway safety type stuff. It's a grant that we received, and it requires officers to go out and do traffic enforcement. We write citations for various infractions. One of those that we've gotten the biggest complaint on is tinted windows. Now, I sent you all an emails explaining that a little bit, but I wanted to just kind of give you another quick rundown and give you all the opportunity to ask any questions. So we're not, the officers are not targeting vehicles just for tent. If the ones that are being written for tent are accompanied with either a loud exhaust, running a stop sign, speeding, and also they're not targeting vehicles that are just barely at the minimum 35%, 30%, 25%, even 20%. They're writing citations that are ranging from everywhere from 1% tent to 5% to 10%. You know, there were some complaints about some of the city vehicles have this amount of tent, you know, the 30% to maybe 25%. A lot of those are done for safety reasons, but again, those are not the ones that are being targeted. The extremely dark, excessively dark tinted windows are the ones that are being cited, and it's also being cited accompanied with another violation. The windshields, for example, the mirror tent, we're starting to see a lot of people that put the mirror tent all the way down the front windshield or even halfway down, and it's, you can't see in there. It's reflective. It blinds the other drivers. At nighttime, if your tent is that dark, if somebody has dim headlights on the older car, even one headlight, or you have pedestrians wearing dark clothing on the side of the road, you're not gonna be able to see them if you have that extremely dark tent. So they are, in fact, safety concerns and safety issues. So that's why those tickets are being written. The last quarterly report, I showed you how many citations we had written. Less than 100 citations of all the citations we've written this year have been because of excessively dark tent. So people are not being targeted just because of the tent. So I'd like to open the floor. If you all have any questions that maybe you all have received from the community, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Chief Newby?
And if you have a constituent or anybody that has a concern with maybe a citation they had, or they just have a concern about anything at all, that, nobody has reached out to me. So I'd be happy to talk to anybody. My email address is on the city website, phone number's on the website. Refer them to me. I'll be happy to answer any questions they have.
Mayor, I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening, chief. How are you?
All right. How are you?
Pretty good. Just for the community to be informed, could you tell us the cost of, if you know, of what the charges are for the price of having tinted windows?
I don't know the exact cost. I do know court cost is around $165, and then whatever the fine amount is, but I will say that the prosecutors and the judges here in Christian County, they've been more than happy to work with people that have the excessive tent. In a lot of cases, they're given the opportunity to remedy the situation once they come in, and they can show that it has been fixed and corrected. A lot of times, those charges may be deferred, dismissed, or put on some type of probationary period.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Travis?
Can you explain why the police cars have a little darker tent? Just because I know that's been a complaint, and there's reasoning behind that, too.
There is. So, for example, last year, we had an officer that had made a drug arrest with a, an individual that had gang ties. The city, we actually had to put that officer and his family in a hotel for three or four days because he was receiving death threats. His house was being targeted. So a lot of times, when we are in our cruisers, a lot of them are the same. We do have some unmarked cruisers, but a lot of times, those windows are dark, so if a certain officer is being targeted for whatever reason, people cannot see which officer is in which vehicle, and it is a safety concern. And we do have a lot of equipment in there. We have, we have laptops. We have a lot of equipment that we have to protect from the heat, so if those start melting, I mean, you're talking about a lot of money, the taxpayer dollars. So that little bit of extra tent, it helps protect our canines. It helps protect the equipment, and it's an officer safety issue. It helps protect the identity of officers that may be targeted.
Any other questions for Chief Newby?
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Okay. Approval amendments, item 9?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving right along to item 10, ordinances. 22-2024, Major Lane and Old Major Lane zoning, first reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, some properties located on Major Lane and Old Major Lane. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by Resolution 202403 to assign the original zoning designation of R1 Single Family Residential District to properties located on Major Lane and Old Major Lane. And whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their June 24th, 2024 meeting for city council to approve original zoning application R24-6-1. And whereas city council concurs said recommendation is in agreement, the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the zoning of the property. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 100.211 Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Community and Development Services Resolution 202403, and recommendation dated June 24th, 2024, the properties listed on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, and as further described on Exhibit B attached here to and incorporated herein are hereby zoned R1 Single Family Residential District. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
All right. Need a motion in a second?
So move.
Steve and Bruce? All righty. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Item B, ordinance 23-2024, Young Street rezoning, first reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, rezone a 1.59 acre property located on Young Street. Whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their June 24th, 2024 meeting for city council to approve rezoning application R24-6-2 as filed by the applicant owner Christian County Government. And whereas city council concurs that a recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the rezoning. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 100.211 Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services recommendation dated June 24th, 2024, a 1.59 acre property vacant lot located on Young Street, parcel ID 252-0005073.00, approximately 220 feet southwest of the intersection of Young Street and West 7th Street. As further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein is hereby rezoned from R4 Multi Family Residential District to B2 General Business District. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
All righty. I need a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Jamie? All righty. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Need a drink of water? Item C, ordinance 24-2024, Downtown Entertainment District on first reading.
An ordinance establishing an entertainment destination center in Hopkinsville, Kentucky, further directing the application for an entertainment destination center license from the Kentucky Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, and further establishing requirements for a license to sell alcoholic beverages within the common areas of the entertainment destination center. Whereas KRS 243.03021 authorizes the issuance of an entertainment destination center EDC license by the Kentucky Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. And whereas the creation of an EDC in the downtown will aid in the economic growth of tourism in the city, capitalize on the revitalization taking place in downtown Hopkinsville, and promote retail growth in Hopkinsville. And whereas the city seeks to create an EDC within its downtown for which it shall obtain a license from the Kentucky Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. And whereas the city further seeks to establish...
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Item B, ordinance 23-2024, Young Street rezoning, first reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, rezone a 1.59 acre property located on Young Street. Whereas Community and Development Services made a favorable recommendation after June 24th, 2024 meeting for City Council to approve rezoning application R24-6-2 as filed by the applicant owner Christian County Government. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the rezoning. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 100.211 Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services Recommendation dated June 24th, 2024, a 1.59 acre property vacant lot located on Young Street, parcel ID 252-0005073.00, approximately 220 feet southwest of the intersection of Young Street and West 7th Street. As further described on Exhibit A attached here to incorporated herein is hereby rezoned from R4 Multi-Family Residential District to B2 General Business District. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
All righty. I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Jamie? All righty. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lomburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Need a drink of water? Item C, ordinance 24-2024, Downtown Entertainment District on first reading.
An ordinance establishing an entertainment destination center in Hopkinsville, Kentucky, further directing the application for an entertainment destination center license from the Kentucky Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, and further establishing the requirements for a license to sell alcoholic beverages within the common areas of the entertainment destination center. Whereas KRS 243.03021 authorizes the issuance of an entertainment destination center EDC license by the Kentucky Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. And whereas the creation of an EDC in the downtown will aid in the economic growth of tourism in the city, capitalize on the revitalization taking place in downtown Hopkinsville, and promote retail growth in Hopkinsville. And whereas the city seeks to create an EDC within its downtown for which it shall obtain a license from the Kentucky Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. And whereas the city further seeks to establish the requirements for a license to sell alcoholic beverages within the common areas of the EDC. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, the geographical boundaries of the entertainment destination center EDC and the city of Hopkinsville are set forth on the map attached here to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. The following properties within the EDC are excluded as of the effective date of this ordinance by religious institutions and certain public spaces, including but not limited to the Hopkinsville Municipal Center. Founder's Square shall be included within the EDC boundaries only during special events as authorized by the city. Section 2, A, the city of Hopkinsville shall apply to the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for an EDC license and shall be the listed licensee. B, the chief financial officer shall serve as the administrator of the EDC license. C, an ABC licensee that is located within the EDC and which sells alcoholic beverages shall be required to hold the necessary alcoholic beverage license or licenses for its premises. Only the applicable existing retail drink licenses are required by the state for an ABC licensee to participate in the EDC. D, in order to participate in the EDC, an ABC licensee must submit a written application to the CFO. Upon verifying the ABC licensee has met all of the requirements of the EDC, the CFO shall enter into a written agreement within the ABC licensee to permit their involvement in the EDC. One, all ABC licensees approved by the CFO to operate within the EDC must enter into a written agreement with the city in which the ABC licensee agrees to indemnify the city and hold the city harmless for any incidents within the EDC, as well as naming the city as an additional insured on the ABC licensee's liquor liability insurance policy and provide the city a written certification evidencing same. Two, all ABC licensees approved by the CFO to operate within the EDC must pay an annual fee of $100. Three, all ABC licensees approved by the CFO to operate within the EDC must provide supplemental training to all servers and bartenders employed by the ABC licensee. The purpose of this supplemental training is to educate the employees of the additional regulations the business is subject to as part of the EDC. Proof of the required additional training must be submitted to the CFO on or before July 1st of each year. For any EDC agreement, shall automatically terminate upon transfer of the ownership of the EDC licensee. Upon such termination, new ownership will be required to reapply for the EDC license before participating in the EDC. Five, if permission to participate in the EDC is denied by the CFO, the ABC licensee may file an appeal of the decision to the city administrator, who will conduct a hearing to determine whether or not to uphold or overturn the decision of the CFO. E, during the EDC operation hours, customers may leave the premises of an EDC participating ABC licensee with alcoholic beverage drinks in the EDC branded cups and consume those drinks in any entertainment destination center common areas of the city. One, possesses the common area. Two, provides adequate security for the common area. Three, ensures that the public streets are controlled in a manner that maintains public safety and pedestrian protection from vehicular traffic. And four, has granted permission for the contact to the participating ABC licensee and has a signed agreement with the city to conduct these activities. F, upon obtaining written permission from the city of Hopkinsville as outlined in subsection G, the following businesses may choose to allow customers to possess a drink and beverages that were purchased from another EDC participating retail drink licensee located wholly within or that has storefront sharing a physical boundary with the licensed entertainment destination center during EDC operational hours. One, a business with a retail drink license located wholly within the city entertainment destination center or that has storefront sharing a physical boundary with a licensed entertainment destination center. And two, a business that does not have a retail drink license that is located wholly within the licensed entertainment destination center or that has a storefront sharing a physical boundary with a licensed entertainment destination center. G, pursuant to KRS 243.020, any business wishing to participate in entertainment destination center as set forth in subsection F, must contact the CFO to obtain written permission to participate. One, written participation may be denied or revoked if: A, the business does not maintain an active business license within the city of Hopkinsville or has not paid all taxes and fees due to the city of Hopkinsville. B, the business does not have a valid certificate of occupancy issued by the city of Hopkinsville. C, the business operated at the location does not routinely allow the public to enter the premises in the normal course of business. D, the business is otherwise ineligible to obtain an ABC license. E, the business, its patrons, agents, servants, or employees engage in disorderly behavior as that term is defined in KRS 244.122. Two, if written permission is denied to a business requesting permission to allow customers to possess and drink beverages that were purchased from the EDC participating retail drink licensee, that business may file an appeal if the decision within seven days of the denial to the city administrator, who will conduct a hearing in order to uphold or overturn the decision to deny written permission. Three, any revocation of written permission to a business allowing customers to possess and drink beverages that were purchased from an EDC participating retail drink licensee will be provided within 24 hours notice. The business may appeal said denial or revocation to the city administrator within seven days of the notice of revocation. If the business fails to appeal license revocation with the time set forth herein, such decision shall be final and shall not be subject to further review. H, an ABC licensee shall hold all necessary licenses to sell alcoholic beverages within the EDC on Sundays in order to participate with the EDC on Sundays. Participating ABC licenses and nonlicensed businesses may prohibit customers from entering their premises with an alcoholic beverage purchased from a participating ABC licensee. J, patrons are prohibited from taking alcoholic beverages outside the physical boundaries of the entertainment destination center. K, any drinks that are removed from the premises of an ABC license participating in the EDC shall be in the city of Hopkinsville Entertainment Destination Cup, which shall meet the requirements of the city regarding the type and design of the cup. These cups shall be purchased by the licensee. L, in no event shall patrons be permitted to bring any alcoholic beverages purchased outside of the EDC into the EDC. M, operational hours of the EDC shall be from 11:00 AM until 10:00 PM and shall run from Sunday through Saturday. N, nothing contained in this ordinance shall be construed to prohibit minors from entering the EDC common areas. O, all EDC licensees are subject to the EDC license being revoked by the city within 24 hours' notice upon a finding by the CFO that the EDC license has violated any terms or conditions of the EDC ordinance, the EDC agreement entered into by the parties or any federal, state, or city law. The city licensee may appeal this revocation to the city administrator within seven days of the notice of revocation. If the EDC licensee fails to appeal license revocation within the time frame set forth herein, such decision shall be subject to further review. Section 3, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 4, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Second.
I got Steve and I got Travis. All right, we have any discussion on this?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The $100 fee that the businesses and the EDC would pay, what does that money, is that money designated to go to something within the EDC, or is that just put in the city's kitty, or where does that money go?
We don't actually have any plans of where that money would go. We have talked about, if this passes and the state comes down, they see our plan and they agree, we will then get with the business owners that are going to operate in the EDC. We'll have some meetings with them and talk about if we're purchasing the cups or they're purchasing the cups and the design and what it's all going to look like. Like, there's a lot more work to do after this passes, but we can't apply for a license with the state until we have an ordinance. So the ordinance is first, and then we apply to the state, and if they approve, then we meet and we have more meetings. But we set a $100 fee kind of based off of, similar to some of the alcohol license requirements already.
And we will bring it back to council, so we will discuss the fee when it comes back to council, where you want to put it. Okay? Any other questions? Ms. Natasha?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed you gave us a map.
Yes, ma'am, Exhibit A.
Yeah, thank you. You got six businesses listed here. Is there any businesses that were not listed here that is for downtown and does the same that did not make the list that you have in front of us?
Everything within those boundaries, every business that would qualify pursuant to the ordinance is eligible. So they can apply, and then there will be a contract with the city. And then, once that's done, then they would be eligible to participate, so long as they're within that boundary.
Okay. Thank you very much, Frank, and I'm just community, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Chuck?
So I've got a couple of questions. Under section D1, have we talked to businesses and are they willing to add the city to their, you know, to their insurance?
Well, this is an ordinance that is very similar to other cities. And it would be my recommendation that if the city does this, that we obtain indemnification from any participating business. If they want to participate in the district, then they need to carry the insurance, and then the city needs to be named as an additional insured. So hopefully that will not be an impediment to participation.
In other places, they're routinely doing this with no issues? Okay, and section E2, provide adequate security for the common area.
That's going to be the...
The business has to provide?
No, that's going to be the city.
Okay, okay.
Yes, public safety.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just for Mr. Willen as well. Provide adequate security, you know, we really have made no change in the traffic pattern or flow in that area, and yet we're expecting and going to anticipate pedestrians to walk around that area. I'm just concerned about the safety of folks that may come and visit that area. How much does this increase the liability of the city in case someone is carrying an alcoholic beverage around and gets injured by a vehicle some way?
Yeah, in my opinion, the city does not carry that liability, but we are conscious of the additional traffic pedestrian safety concerns. I know the chief has expressed his concerns due to the size of this area to monitor. I expect that we're going to get some advice and feedback from the state, because that's what they will do. It's my understanding they will come here and take a look at the actual area and approve it or not approve it. So we may be bringing this back to redo. I don't know, but this is just where we have to start. We've taken several looks at it, it's been reduced in scope. And, but due to how our businesses are spread out, this is just where we landed, to reduce it as much as possible. And I will note that Founder's Square is on the boundary, but that's only going to be during special events. So it's not going to be an area just where people can congregate. It's going to be going from one business to another, using the common area to get from one business to another, but it's not an ordinance allowing just public gathering to drink in public.
Okay. I know that we've had this discussion about other municipalities in Kentucky that have done this. Many of them have already altered the traffic patterns in that area. Basically, I don't want to use the wrong terminology, but kind of closed that area in just because it becomes a more safe area for pedestrians to walk around.
And I'm sure we will be receiving some feedback, and we will certainly take that in consideration.
Okay, enough said, thank you.
Couple more questions.
I haven't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just had another question on I. So we're creating an EDC where people can meander from eatery to eatery. I buy beer at item A, I've walked the street with five friends, picked up three more, we're now entering business D. We all walk in with our cups, half beers or whatever, and we want to buy more. But I says that the businesses may prohibit customers from entering their premises with an alcoholic beverage purchased from a participating ABC licensee. So that, to me, just on first read, that kind of read, like, if I bought an alcoholic beverage at A and I walk down the street and I want to walk in with half a beer to get another one, that business may say, oh, no, you've got a beer, you've got to chug it at the door before you come inside. I thought the whole purpose of this was just to stroll and stumble drunk and have a good time, but maybe I'm missing something there.
With that provision, in my, in my opinion, what that provision means is that this ordinance does not require a business to allow patrons that they would not otherwise want entering their store. So if there is a disturbance, you do not have to allow that person to come in your store just because we've got this ordinance allowing going from one place to another. They still have that discretion.
Okay, I doesn't say anything about a disturbance, but, okay.
Chuck?
Okay. Item G1 says, written permission may be denied or revoked if, and all of the five different things there. I think it opens up the city to, I think it would be better, it said either yes or no. You know, may, you know, if you do may for Don, but you don't for Chuck, that could be the issue.
Well, and again, this is a fairly standard ordinance that has been used in other cities. The only thing that we've added here that has not been used in some of the other cities, such as Louisville, Lexington, Henderson, Somerset, I mean, there are a handful, would be C, oh, excuse me, D, a business that is otherwise ineligible to obtain an ABC license. We felt that they would not be a good candidate to participate in the destination center. So we've added that in, but in my opinion, there needs to be some discretion in order to apply the facts to good common sense. There's an appeal procedure. So if the first step, if it's denied, then there is due process.
Process.
And always, there's the court of law if they feel that that discretion has been abused.
Any more questions? Okay, we seeing none, I'll call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lomburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
All righty. Now, ordinance 25, where'd it go? 25-2024, the operational budget, first reading.
Amending the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, by summary, section 1 of ordinance 162024 adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending July 30, or June 30, 2025 is amended as follows. Revenue, general fund, $51,394,493. Municipal Road Aid Fund, $776,690. Prior year MRA, $148,619. Prior year general fund, $475,697. Total revenues, $52,7995,499. Expenses, general fund, $51,870,190. Municipal Road Aid Fund, $925,309. Total expenses, $52,795,499. Surplus zero. Section 2, the full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the city of Hopkinsville, 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
So moved. Second.
All righty. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lomburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Thank you. All righty, we move into item 11, municipal order, 22-2024, 2525 Surface Storm Water Utility Budget.
Pursuant to section 54.021 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Hopkinsville City Council hereby approves the attached 2024-2025 budget for the Hopkinsville Surface and Storm Water Utility. for the Hopkinsville Surface and Storm Water Utility.
Okay. Need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Amy and Travis, any discussion about this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Now, executive order 21-2024, Small Business Commission.
Effective immediately, Carlos Duran shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Small Business Commission to fill the unexpired term of Trey Gillen. This term shall expire June 30, 2025. Effective immediately, Russ Gaffey shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Small Business Commission to fill the unexpired term of Sarah Whitaker. This term shall expire June 30, 2025. And we do need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Travis and Don, any discussion about this? All righty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Item B, Executive Order 22-2024, Hawkinsville Christian County Public Library Board of Trustees.
Effective September 1, 2024, Jonathan Zordell shall be reappointed and Becky Dierman shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Christian County Public Library Board of Trustees. These terms shall expire August 31, 2028. And there's no action required.
All righty. Item 13, other. Anybody got any other business they'd like to speak about? All right. Oh?
Councilmembers, if you didn't notice as you came in, Public Works has had the doors automated. So they're disabled friendly. And I want to tell you, it may seem like a small thing, but that's a very big thing. It makes it completely accessible to all our residents now. And you're making some who probably felt forgotten or overlooked feel very seen. So I can't thank you enough for that. We truly appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. Good job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you. All righty. Councilmen comments? No comments? I need a motion to move into closed session per KRS. Per KRS 61.8101C, pending litigation. Motion.
Second.
Don and Travis, thank you. We will go on there.
Yeah, all in favor?
We got a vote.